Chen Chen.
Two minutes, Mayor.
He's gonna keep Scott on time. Have to think of something.
That is a very good question, and I've been thinking about it.
Who was that?
God, sorry.
Oh, yeah. I didn't know I was unmuted.
I, I, yeah, I, um.
I can hear you, but the mute's down here.
Yeah, I've already been thinking about Al. Since he's gonna be gone, I won't have a time.
Go on. Better start on time.
I don't know, that Brad guy never does anything. Maybe he could help out.
Hello, Chris.
Evening, Al. Good evening, everyone.
Less, uh, less than a minute, Mayor.
Hello, everyone. Hello, George.
Hi, George.
Hello, Pam.
Hey, George.
Hi, Pam.
Five forty-five, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Al. And as we usually do, we start these on time to reward all of you that arrived on time. So tonight, we're gonna talk about the Alternative Response Group, which is something that first surfaced last summer during our budget discussions. And to kick it off, it's our city manager, Steve Sarbi.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll be referring to this report that was sent out to council with your packet, and I think it was available to the community as well. I'd like to start off first with some thank yous. I want to thank Nick Knudsen, who was an intern working for the city since August and did a lot of work looking at the different models that came out of this process. Also, I want to certainly thank all the subcommittee members. And last but not least, Brian Verdig, who kept the cats herded and moving in the same direction, more or less. I want to talk very briefly about the history and intentions and needs. The history of this project, as far as the city goes, goes back to about four years ago when I first started working for the city. Former Chief, Police Chief Bostrack and I saw a story about an embedded social worker in the Duluth Police Department in the League of Minnesota City's newsletter. We thought that was a rather novel way of dealing with issues that PD has been, that all police departments have been dealing with. And we kind of put that on the back shelf after doing a little investigation, and we pursued the COO project instead, and we instituted that program, as the council's aware. But we had vet, we always had decided we wanted to circle back to this project of social workers in the, in the police department. And so we, we took this up again this summer. The number of calls for mental health especially that the police have to deal with, the numbers are really exploding. And we're seeing cases where we're spending hundreds of hours for individual citizens for having these issues and trying to figure out ways that we can best use the resources. The police department, I believe, does a yeoman's job. They get called, they get dispatched, they go on the calls, they do the very best they can. They do have some training, but it's not really in their wheelhouse to deal with these issues. And certainly, not to solve them, they're more of an emergent issue and dealing with it with the issue right at the, at the moment that there's a problem. And so we're trying to figure out a way that we can get beyond that, maybe get pre, proactive about providing services and resources to people so that they, they don't enter the system in the first place. So my mind, as I looked at it, I thought that this new response program has to be proactive in delivering those services so that police doesn't have to get involved in the first place. We certainly want to reduce the call volume for the PD. And of course, it needs to be cost effective. And so we challenged Brian Verdig to put a group together to represent the entire spectrum of these issues. I really felt that this would be something best served by a community group working on this issue. And thankfully, we were joined by two council members, Councilmember Borjukowski and, and Muller, who joined us, I believe, for all the meetings, and it was really valuable having them along this process as well. With that, I'd like to maybe shift gears over to Brian and let Brian talk quickly about putting that stakeholder group together, what the process was and how we came up with what we came up with.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. Good evening, everyone. It's, it's, it's fun to be on the, on the seen and heard end of this. I'm usually in the background at these gatherings. Yeah, my role as with Engage Winona was just simply to facilitate the group. And I just want to just talk briefly about the process and then clear space. We have a lot of group members here tonight to share their feedback and their reflections and to talk about sort of where the process started and where it ended. It was a, it was a cross-sector group of folks representing a lot of different places in the community, from social services to education to nonprofits and businesses, and then especially folks who are doing a lot of community-based work around equity and justice and some other related issues. It was a group of about 12 folks, and we met weekly on Tuesdays for pretty large chunks of time between October and November to do a couple of things. One was to come to consensus around a set of, really around a set of shared values and things that the group together from folks working on racial justice and equity to folks within the police department, to folks in social services, all could look at and say, this is a really valuable piece we want as part of the program. These are some of the outcomes we want to see, and to find, and to really seek deep consensus on those pieces. And then, once we found a vision, we really relied on Nick and his deep research to investigate and evaluate a number of different models. We spent several hours doing that. And then worked together in conversation to talk about what best model fit the one on a community, what was unique to our needs, what was unique to the values we outlined, and what was really unique to what we wanted to see in terms of short-term and long-term outcomes for the community. And so did that, and then by middle to late November, the group came to consensus around the, the vision and the proposal that you have before you tonight. And I'm really looking forward to a couple of things. I mean, I'll signpost that it was a, it was a process with a quick turnaround. And so we had some really great diverse participation of folks. And there's also a need and a desire to want to see a sort of ongoing participation from the community and input to help grow this as it moves forward. And for the group to really look toward a proposal like this and, and see it as a really great foundation, a really great starting point, and be excited to see where it grows and to make this commitment really to launch something and then to build it and respond and to make it even more effective as it went forward. So I was pleased to be a part of it. I was really pleased just to see how the, the outcome came together and the group came together. And just wanted to give you a bit of a background on that process. But now I just want to clear space. I see a lot of our group members here tonight. And I'm wondering if maybe, maybe Eileen, George, and Jay is sort of the city representatives could kick it off and talk a bit about sort of their participation. And then I know I see Angela and Katie and Claire and Bonnie here. And I have a couple of screens, so if I'm missing anyone, speak up. But then turn it over to all you really, just to take a moment and share with the council your role in this and your reflections. I think both in the current state and where you hope to see it go.
I could start, I guess. Well, I, first, you know, I just want to echo the, the gratitude that, that Steve and Brian have expressed to everyone who put time in on this and especially to those who are volunteer community members on the subcommittee because it is, it was a pretty intense process. And so thank you for being willing to do that. There, this was a facilitated process, obviously with a really quick timeline. But I think that considering all of the limitations that we had in front of us, we put, we were able to, as a group, come up with what the important priorities are for this team, this proposed response team, and what functions they would need to have. And the insight that was provided by our social service professionals and then Jay from the police department was really crucial in helping shape the recommendation that we, that this committee is bringing forward to council. So it's someone who can fill some of the gaps and also provide services that are not currently available through our emergency services. And I'll let, I think Jay can give some more information on that piece of it. But it was a, it was a good process. I personally felt like it was a very consensus-based process, which I think is always the, the best way to go about creating something new from the community. So I'm just, I feel very grateful that I could be part of it and see how it came together. I think it will be a very great program for the city.
I very much respect my, the council. So George, did you want to go before me or do you want me to go?
I'll let you go and I'll back third.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Yeah, I'll echo what Eileen said. I would just say that the police were always very supportive of this. You know, Brian led and facilitated the group, and it was really good. He was instrumental in keeping things on task and respectful, even when there were differences. And that's, that's how you come to a good program is if everybody was in consensus from the beginning, we're probably not doing what we're set out to do. I would also compliment Nick on his research, Steve with his vision, and our chief, Tom Williams, on being open-minded about having anything and supporting anything and the training that our department has been doing with Hiawatha for the last couple of months anyway. I thought it was a very diverse group. There was times it was hard to listen to some things as a police officer because we really do try our best to help everybody. And I think that the city of Winona Police Department does do a good job at that. But it's really stepping back and saying, how can we be better? And I think having this alternative response does help us serve the community better. Sometimes the best service, I've said this in the article in the Shopper, but sometimes the, the best service we can provide isn't always, the city can provide isn't always from the police, even though we're 24/7. So I think stepping back on this, part of my role was to provide insight as to how the police department works and try to include what we do, how we do it, how much we do it, and providing even real-life scenarios and examples along the way. Other than that, besides processes that police weren't close to, I really tried to kind of step back, just listen. But yeah, it was a very valuable. I'm really looking forward to this program. I think that, you know, one of the big things that we wrote in, in the final package was the potential or the chance to put people on a trajectory for, for future, to, to make it in the future better than they are now. And I think, I think we're gonna be able to accomplish that. I think this is a wonderful starting point. I do think, I've echoed this before, that this program will only grow. This is a start. A year from now, we might make some adjustments along the way and such. But this is a, this is a start, and I think it's gonna be a good start. And I'm really looking forward to working with Hiawatha Valley if we are able to. And even if not, we will continue to work with them anyway. But thank you.
Are you ready for me? Go ahead, George. Okay, thank you. Serving on this committee, which I serve on many committees, on city boards and commissions, and this committee was one of the most interesting ones that I've ever served on. And I really, really found out a lot of information on things that go on within our police and with it, within our social services. The things that Chief Rasmussen said in Eileen, I cannot add to any more of that. Just that what they said is what went on in the, in the committee. And what I found interesting is we had many different walks of life. I believe there was 12 of us, and we all came from a little different background. We had the social workers, we had people of the community, we had police, city council. And it was certainly good to see all these walks of life come together to come up with this mission here that we have now with us tonight. There were some things that I know I have had come to me before the committee that they did not want these people solely embedded within the police department. They wanted the folks to be outside of the police department. We went ahead and did that. We have people, of course, from the community coming in and saying different things on it, and it was all, all very interesting. When it comes to respectfulness, a lot of us have had different opinions on things, but we were able to work whatever those differences were. We were able to work them out. I totally was in support of contracting this position out. I think financially, it's the best move for the city, not having these people as full-time city employees, full-time police department employees. And like I said, in, in regards to contracting it out, I was a big proponent of supporting the county. I think a couple of other people were, but as the whole committee just got together, everybody gave their thoughts and ideas. We decided that, you know, we did not care to go with the county on a full-time basis with this. And then, of course, Hiawatha Valley Mental Health was chosen, which the committee unanimously agreed on contracting with Hiawatha Valley Mental Health. One of my biggest concerns, and I don't think it was touched on tonight, but I think it probably will be when I'm done here, is I'm very concerned about the response time. You know, what is the response time going to be when we summon or dispatch the community service worker to a, you know, potential address? How long is it getting, how long is it gonna be? I, I'm very, very confident that this is gonna work. Yes, it is going to assist our police department. It's gonna be able to free them up of some hours where they may not have to deal with all this. Like I say, response time and follow-up time were two of my biggest issues. I know we addressed them in the committee, and I'd like to have Brian or Steve just address those two again tonight when I'm done here. And also, I say again, with all these different walks of life and different backgrounds, we came together as a group to present this mission statement here tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, George. And in a couple of minutes, we'll have Steve and Eric here from Hiawatha Valley to talk through some of the proposal details. And that should answer your question, George. And I'm wondering, before that, I know we have Angela, Katie, Claire, and Bonnie. I see if I'm missing anyone. Forgive me and speak up. But is it, it's optional. I know some of you said you wanted to be here to listen. Some of you said you wanted to, to speak, but certainly space for you if you wanted to share about the process and then talk with the council about your role in it, too.
I'll speak very briefly. I just want to say I'm grateful for the opportunity to have been involved, even though the evenings that we met, I had prior engagements. I was still able to be a part of the committee, so I appreciate that. Things that I think are very important to consider. Winona is making commitments to be a trauma-informed community. That is something that has been seen through different workshops that have been put on in the county and different decisions that have been made. And I think this is going to be a step in the right direction. Preventative mental health through crisis response specific to mental health needs will really allow for Winona community members to feel safe and supported and not have to encrue the financial strain and stress that comes with being put in jail for a potential mental health concern. So that is something that I think is going to really support members of this community. Lastly, I just want to speak to something that was mentioned earlier. I think it was mentioned by Brian and George about growing a program that's going to have the potential to be looked at again to make sure that it's working. And while I'm hearing everyone speak the diversity voices that were on the committee, and there really were a lot of extremely important voices that came together to use their professional insight and experience to help inform what I think is a really successful model. I think that it is important that we continue to go back to those community members who are utilizing these services, get their input as we're growing a program to make sure that it is effective and it is something that is going to be the most beneficial for those hoping to serve. Thank you all again for taking the time to listen to this proposal.
Anybody else from the committee want to speak?
Say a few words. This is Angela. I was able to sit in on the, on the committee and be a part of what I feel was a very wonderful group that really worked hard to make sure that the voices that were present were heard. And when Claire just spoke about making sure that we do listen to the voices, that was my whole point of being on the committee, was to make sure that voices that aren't heard are heard. So the people that, you know, indigenous, black, people of color, LGBT, LGBTQ, and single mothers was another group that will be utilizing the services probably more frequently than the... Sorry, I'm saying these wrong, but the, the people whose voices that aren't usually heard on committees like this, I just wanted to make sure that their voices were heard. And so I feel that they were. And I just want that to be kind of kept in the forefront because the people that are gonna be using the services, it's very important to hear what their needs are. And I feel that their needs were heard in this group. And so what came of the whole process, it was agreed upon by everybody that was there. And it was just a really wonderful experience for myself to be a part of it and to know that it's something that can continue to grow in the community because I think it's gonna be a wonderful asset to the police department, to the mental health services, to the hospital services, for the ambulance and things like that. And just to make sure that it is looked at in the future, that the people that are using it continue to have that voice. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Angela, and thanks, Claire. Steve and Eric, do you want to talk through some of the proposal details? Steve, you might be muted. I can't, I can't tell if you're talking behind that mask.
How about now? Yeah, okay.
Yep, now we got you.
Well, I just gave such a wonderful talk. It was brilliant. What, what I thought I would do is just a, a quick overview, and then I'll let, turn it over to Eric and let him talk about how this really dovetails with Hiawatha Valley's changing sort of service model a bit. But to get to George's point about response time, it certainly is gonna depend on if the event occurs and the dispatch occurs while these two folks are working. If they're working, we would expect them, if they get dispatched directly to the, you know, to it or they're following the police. You know, it could be a pretty quick response time, much like what the police have, or certainly within a few minutes to, you know, half an hour. If, if it happens during a time when these two aren't on, part of it's gonna depend on the, on the contract that we work up with Hiawatha Valley. They also have the crisis response team, and of course, the police will always respond as they do now. So there's, there's several layers to a response that, that could come out of this program. Basically, what we're looking at is, is employing two community connectors. The city would contract through Hiawatha Valley to employ these two community connectors. We often talk about social workers because that has sort of been the, I guess, the words of choice in the past because that's what many of the models have. But we really think that community connectors, which is a growing service that's being provided here in Winona to begin with, we think that's, that's gonna be a good way to, to move forward. They'll have, they'll have some really strong skill sets and additional training that they might not normally get before we put them on. The hours, location, communication, those, of course, will still have to work out. But we really want the Alternate Response Group to be staffed at those times when they're most likely to be needed. I think originally PD had suggested a 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM shift. And of course, that could change, but that's, that's sort of one of the thoughts that we had. And they could be housed out of the office on Sarnia, which is good news because the police department doesn't have any space to begin with and other city buildings, it could be problematic. So this is, this is a really good opportunity for us to take advantage of the facility they have there. Also, a close coordination with the police during their shift changes. That feedback loop is really important. Our next steps, if council approves this through the budget process, would be to sit down with Hiawatha Valley and come up with contract terms and determine when we want to get started. One thing of note that I'd like to let the council know, we started off with a proposal of $300,000 in the budget. We reduced that to 225 when the preliminary budget was approved in September. In working with Eric, because of the social workers are not really gonna be part of this, we've determined that we think we can, we can provide this service for $185,000 in the budget. And so that would be the number that you'll see for the final budget on the 21st. Again, maybe Eric, if you could speak a bit about the process to your, you know, the way that you're looking at it and your board, and how this really fits in with some of the things that you're looking at doing over at Hiawatha Valley.
Yeah, I appreciate being able to join the council tonight. And one of the materials you have talks about Hiawatha Valley Mental Center, the mission, vision, values. And our vision talks about mental health and behavioral health support. And this is absolutely in line with things that affect people's health and affects people's ability to comply and, and follow through on treatment recommendations. So some of us, I'm sure, know about different determinants of health, such as employment, education, housing, food insecurity, all the things that might involve a call by this Alternative Response Team that significantly affect people's health, whether it be mental health or physical health. This is completely in line with our organization's vision. We are working with the county on a community connector position for their reentry program. And so when Steve and I were talking about positions and costs and how they could function, it's, you know, the, the template was kind of already there with what we worked out with the county, Winona County specifically. So the timing for our agency and organization is, is, is very good since we potentially might have three new community connectors under a director here based out of our Sarnia clinic who can learn from each other. The, our board has reviewed this, and just earlier, this The, our board has reviewed this and just earlier this evening, we talked about it and we feel like this, like we could offer a lot to the community through these positions. You know, we, we pride ourselves in being confidential in our delivery of services, whatever that service is. And I think that for the committee, it sounds like was one of the key things in the decision process was, you know, we live in HIPAA every day here. And so no matter why we interact with someone, we, we, we do not share that with others unless we have the proper things in place. So as we define this, if this becomes a reality next year, it's just working out how this, how these roles intersect, interact with law enforcement in the city, how we intersect, interact with our current mobile mental health crisis program that we have and have had for a number of years. And, and how we ensure as much as possible the safety of our employees who might be going out on calls in a different way than they do today. So those are the, those are the main points from our agency's perspective. And we really appreciate being considered to work closer with the city on this for the community.
Thanks Eric. We really appreciate how this has come together. I think for the council to understand the timing of this, again, if, if it, if it stays in the budget for next year, we can put a, we can put a contract together with Hiawatha Valley and the city fairly quickly to bring back the council. However, I would remind the council that due to the COVID situation and, and, and what might happen at the state budget, it might be prudent from a fiscal standpoint to wait to actually do this later on in the spring or early summer. However, as we've seen, the mental health need is, is critical right now at this moment. And so that should weigh in on the decision that the council makes whether to do this sooner in the year rather than later. And I think with that, Mayor, we'd be open to any questions. If there's specific program questions and things that need to be worked out in a, in a contract, you'll have to understand, we probably can't answer those like, how does billing going to get handled and things like that?
Are there questions from council members?
Mayor George here.
Hello, George.
Yeah, Steve, I don't think it was mentioned yet about the follow-up procedure.
The follow-up?
Right.
Yeah, this, that, it's certainly one of the, the main things that, that this program is going to bring is instead of just having a, a situation dealt with at the moment by the police, there'll be follow-up, not only incidents that the police deal with and that will be handed back over to these folks to take care of through Hiawatha Valley. But also the, the calls that they make on their own, that they'll be able to follow up as well because follow-up is key. Just simply giving someone a phone number and a contact and say, let's say that they're having a food security issue and, and showing them where the food bank is. That's one thing, but what we really want is for the connector to actually take them over there physically and show them how to access that service. Same with getting meds or applying for a job. Those things that, that sometimes people just, they don't follow through on, that we can make sure that they're followed through. And we believe that'll make a big difference in the number of calls that we get of, of a repetitive nature. I think Jay was telling me, they've had one individual over the last year, maybe less, 160 calls for that one individual. And most of those calls could be handled by this program. That's just, that's just one slice of, of what the call volume looks like that will be offset by this program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cheryl Meyer.
Good morning.
I'm not sure who, who, who can answer this, but I'm curious about how many other communities, I mean this, I mean, in our eyes, this is somewhat unique. But how many other communities in, in Minnesota have programs that are similar to what we're instituting? And anybody can answer that.
There, there's several. Duluth has got a program, as I stated before, Olmsted County, Hennepin County. Some of the inner ring suburbs of Minneapolis have just joined in to hire social workers as well. So this is certainly getting to be a growing, a growing model that's being used in Minnesota. But as Nick found, especially through the state of, of Illinois, it's been going on there for decades. And every community that we spoke to that had instituted a, a program like this, it's changed over time. But they've, they've kept it. They have not gotten rid of the program unless there was a budgetary issue. And I'm not even sure we came across that.
Thank you.
Councilman Thurlie.
You want to know?
Thank you. I appreciate the work of this group. I was very impressed with what I heard tonight, very intense gathering that all of you have participated in. And one of my concerns initially from council, when this program got underway was where this idea would meet the needs of our community. And I think through this committee and others that have had their input, it certainly has reflected a Winona centric effort. So I, I, I appreciate that and, and look forward to perhaps its implementation. One question I have, and I don't know who could answer this, and maybe this is more of a detail thing, but I'm, well, my, my question is, how does dispatch, when they get the initial call, know how to deal with that call? In other words, is it, is it a direction to the police department? Or is it something that the community connectors might have to deal with? How's that? Is that going to be a, like a decision matrix set up for that? I guess I'll ask anybody that could jump in on that with an answer.
I'll, I'll, I'll try to answer that one. In most communities that have implemented this, that allow the connectors or the social workers to go on calls directly, it, it involves a specific training with the dispatch center. So the dispatch center knows which calls can be sent directly to the alternative response team and which ones need to be routed through the police first. And in some cases though, we won't know. The community connectors would show up on scene, but they have that skillset right now to be able to say, something isn't quite right. We really need the police to come and back us up. Or vice versa, the police going to call and realize this really should have been directed to somebody else and not us. So some of it'll be trial and error.
Yeah, and I think too, we, we need to address the city's liability in cases like this as we do with all police calls and things like that. So I mean, get that whole process going so everybody understands or has a clear understanding of, of what that process is. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Pam. I have a question. Yes, yes. I would like to know a little bit more about the, the community connectors. Are we, are there community connectors at Hiawatha Valley? Are there community connectors at the county? It seems that the term is, I'm, I'm a little confused by the term. Are these people all working together? Or are we, are we referring only to the, to the city's program?
There are currently community connectors at the hospital. And I believe at Livewell Winona. And then Eric can speak to what's going to go on with restorative justice and that this just falls into that, into that model.
And so the, the state term in Minnesota is, is community health worker, but a lot of us in Winona call them community connectors and Winona Health has had this position in place at, at the hospital for I think two years. And a research, they, they've led the way with what other ways you can fund this position. Winona County just this year received a, a grant. There, Winona reentry assistance program where through that, they're contracting with Hiawatha Valley Mental Center to have a community connector to work with individuals in the jail here in Winona County with high level of mental substance abuse needs. And to get involved with them when they're getting close to returning into the community. So helping them, I compare it to discharge planning for social workers in the hospital, what happens all the time. But this is discharge planning for people being returned to their community to help reduce recidivism and things that get in the way of them being successful in the community. So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a national position known throughout the country. And in our state, it's called a community health worker. We just call them community connectors. I don't know why, but that's what we call them in Winona. And their really duties include providing resources, promoting and maintaining and improving individual health in the community, providing support and informal counseling, all the things that, you know, Steve and this committee defined would be needed in this role, really fit well with that, that title. And so other than us and Winona, there's others that are curious about this position and looking into it too. But yet, yet to have that defined for them.
Thank you.
We have a couple of minutes and then we're going to have to wrap it up. The Chief Williams, did you want to say anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate my thanks to everybody on the panel and City Manager Sarvi. A couple of years ago, as he mentioned, we did look at the COOP program and the mental health aspect of, of law enforcement. And as you may or may not be aware, we did implement the COOP program. We had two officers assigned to that for community outreach. And I, as it started out extremely successful, but of course COVID kind of put the brakes on it for us, limited the number of contacts that those officers could make. And once we get back up and running again, I think there's a potential there for maybe our outreach officers to possibly work somewhat as a liaison with our, our, our people. And from a law enforcement standpoint, as Steve mentioned, one individual that we have 100 plus calls for gets to be pretty tasking and we're not obviously solving the problem or addressing the problem like we need to. We're, we're just moving the problem down the block. And as Eric mentioned, in terms of is it economics, is it food, is it home life? Those are the things that the officers don't ascertain in the, in the brief time that they have, that they make the connection with the individual. People tend to always call law enforcement at, at the worst time in their lives. And they calling for help. And we do a phenomenal job, in my opinion, of doing that in most cases. But as Steve mentioned, do we have all the tools? We don't. Can we put a Band-Aid on it for that timeframe? We can't. But what is going to be the best outcome for the individuals that truly need services and need follow-up? I have to believe that it's, it's this program. And as Jay mentioned, it may take a little bit of massaging, it may take a little bit of tweaking. But ultimately, it's, it's good for the police department and it's good for the citizens of Winona. So from my standpoint and my staff's standpoint, we're excited. We're, we're wanting to work with everybody. We're going to make this work. We actually met with Kailene Engel from the Criminal Justice Coordinated Council as a, dealt with the RAP program as Eric mentioned. And we're going to kind of piggyback on that for training. That's going to be offered for the jail staff and the individuals that are dealing with RAP and law enforcement, both Winona County Sheriff's Office and the Winona Police Department are going to piggyback and jump on that educational piece that's being offered through the grant. So I think the sky's the limit. So a lot of positive energy going into this and I'm feeling real good about it.
Thank you, Chief. And I want to say thank you to the city staff and all the volunteers and Brian, everybody involved in this. I think it's an exciting concept and I look forward to the discussion during our, our budget meeting on the 21st. So thank you and we'll reconvene here in just a few minutes.
Can't hear anybody, but.
All right. 6:30, I'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I have a statement I need to read. It's 6:30 and I've called the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.021 in response to the COVID-19 emergency. Let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call. So each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so that you are easily identified. The public will be allowed to speak during designated public hearings, but we do not have any tonight. And I have a couple of comments I'd like to make. One is a couple of retirements I'd like to recognize. The city wishes to recognize the service of two longtime employees. Both who retired from the wastewater treatment plant this month. Congratulations to Bill Stolpa and Mike Borkowski. Bill Stolpa started employment with the city on December 11th, 1990 as a maintenance worker in the sewer division. He was promoted to the position of operator in May 1998. He was a great coworker and easy to get along with. easy to get along with. He took his work seriously and was diligent in completing tasks and projects. Bill retired on December 4, 2020, just one week shy of 31 years of service. Mike Borkowski started employment with the city on July 18, 20 or 1979 as a skilled laborer. He was promoted to truck driver helper in November of 1979 and then to the position of operator in October 1980. Mike provided the division with the second type of set of eyes. He was just detailed in his work to ensure the odds and ends were taken care of. He was also very good in improvising ways to fix things around the plant. Mike will retire on December 11, 2020 with 41 years of service. Congratulations to Bill Stolpa and Mike Borkowski on your retirement. Your years of experience will be greatly missed and we thank you for sharing your knowledge with the team. We wish you both a long, healthy and happy retirement. Second item I have is it's my pleasure tonight to announce the Winona Human Rights Commission. Sean Latch Human Rights Award is going to La Shona Tisha Morgan for outstanding contribution to the community of Winona concerning human rights issues. Thank you very much and congratulations on your award. And with that, I'll ask the city manager if he has anything.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Borkowski was eight years old when he was first hired by the city. I just want to give an update that the library folks are being tested as we speak, waiting for the results. We hope to have the library open at least to some degree by the end of this week. Want to remind folks to continue to wear masks, practice social distancing, and good hand hygiene as a way to stop this virus. And we are anxiously waiting for the vaccine rollout and we're doing everything we can to make sure that Winona is at the top of the list. The the operation that we pulled off this fall with the fire department in distributing flu vaccine was a good test run for our community to make sure that we can quickly distribute the vaccine for COVID if and when it becomes available in that kind of quantity. So again, we're doing everything we can to position the city so that we can take advantage of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will do roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Borzakowski. He's here.
George, you know you're there, George.
Here.
Ben Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions request and communications, the first item is 3.1 license agreement for portable restrooms. Darcy Inc. doing business as Kimmos.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve that request.
Eileen seconds.
I meant to approve the license. I'm sorry.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion?
Mayor, George here.
Go ahead.
Now, these are the portable restrooms that are all around Lake Winona, correct? Or it's part of them?
Correct.
Okay, if we can just mention to the operator, I have had a lot of calls from people and I've seen people on the bike path and maybe a few other council members have heard from people as well, too. But the cleanliness of those portable restrooms in some of them has just been unbearable. I know I called it into Marty Mullen here back in in August and so, but if we can remind them that one of their responsibilities as they pump them is to keep them clean and keep them supplied because there has been a lot of complaints about that not happening.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2 is the Main Street Program signed request.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Move approval of that request.
George seconded.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 3.3 is the DISC golf course renovation.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the fundraising campaign.
Scholmeyer second. Second.
Michelle moved and I think Paul seconded. Discussion?
Mark, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I just want to thank this group. I know this is one of the appeals and draws to our lake for visitors to Winona. I mean, I think it's kind of a unique course in our area. And I think we are all aware that it needs some TLC and it's been in the the comp plan for the plans now for a little while and finding ways to fund it is always a challenge. So I really appreciate that group taking the initiative to try to to raise the funds so that we can get that improved for the community. So thank you, group.
Councilman Thurly with a few questions.
Right now.
First of all, how long do these sponsorships last? And is there a plan to perhaps as they run out to replace them? And second, if it's 18 holes, at 1,500 a hole, that's 27,000, is that going to be enough to cover the expenses?
Mayor and Council, this is Patrick Menton with the Park Rec Department. This would be a five-year term and then we would open it up to to re-sponsorship. And we did build in some costs for the ongoing maintenance. So one of the one of the reasons for opting to partner with Winona Community Foundation for the fundraising efforts would be so that we could create some type of an endowment or a reserve fund. So there'll be additional monies will be put in for future upkeep.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
The other questions or discussion?
Mayor, George here.
George, go ahead.
It says constructed in 2003. Patrick, maybe you know, weren't those constructed before 2003? Or am I just aging myself more?
Well, I'll choose how I answer wisely. But Mayor Council, through the research that I did, it's my understanding that it was 2003 and Tom Bass Bender was one of the key people to work with, I believe, some students to get this going. It was installed and then time for some renovations. So a lot of time has passed between there.
And just to commend another example of Winona community members just stepping forward and I thank them.
Any other comments? Not will vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3.4 is the American Cruise Line proposal for docking at Levy Park.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the license agreement. Eileen seconds.
Informational here tonight. There's no.
Never mind. I'm sorry. I was a headmon. I'm so sorry. Pardon me.
About a month and a half ago, we were contacted by Frank Klipch and former mayor of Davenport, Iowa, who's working for the American Cruise Lines. And the owners of the cruise line and Frank came to Winona and city staff and I had a chance to meet with them and talk about the potential here of their boat stocking in 2021, 22 times and then growing from there. Since then, the city staff and our city attorney have been working with them on an agreement. They're not there yet, but this is ongoing and will probably be on the agenda for the December 21st meeting. I think it's a game changer in some ways for downtown Winona to have this many boats stopping here in Winona and I'm hoping that it will go forward. But I want to turn it over to Chad to talk it more in detail about what's going on. And I know Frank is on online if we need to ask any questions, but they'll be back on the 21st as well.
Okay, Mayor and Council, thanks for the few minutes tonight. We, as the mayor said, we wanted to inform you that we're currently working with the American Cruise Lines about a long-term agreement for the American Cruise Lines to dock in Winona for their upper Mississippi River stretch of their cruises. And Brad, can you do a share screen so I can bring up an image for Council, please?
Go ahead, Jen.
Okay, thank you. American Cruise Lines currently has four ships on the Mississippi River and currently are building three more. The Cruise Lines is proposing anywhere from 20 to 30 stops, as the mayor mentioned, per season. And max guests per stop would be under 200, but likely over 150. And so obviously, we certainly see the benefit of this tourism coming to Winona. The American Cruise Lines is proposing to dock in Levy Park. We're working toward an agreement for the cruise line to use approximately 450 feet of the docking wall between the Cal Fremling and the Winona tour boat. Again, as the mayor mentioned, we're looking for this to begin the 2021 season. And again, for this to be a lengthy or long-term relationship through the agreement. And again, for business purposes, the American Cruise Lines is looking for priority docking within this agreement at the licensed premise, meaning the 450 feet between Cal Fremling and the Winona tour boat. And I will point out that we do have approximately 975 feet between Cal Fremling and the Winona tour boats. This is about half the space. So we would be able to allow other boats to dock. However, again, as I've mentioned, we are working with the cruise line to allow for priority docking within that 450 feet that they need. We're certainly excited about the opportunity, as the mayor mentioned, this would present for Winona tourism. And again, certainly not my job to promote for for the American Cruise Line, but wanted to present these images to you and let you know that we've had excellent conversations with the company and their representatives, both at Levy Park and again via Zoom. And again, we brought this item forward tonight for two reasons, again, without any motion needed, but more for informational purposes. First, the agreement is a long-term relationship. We want to make sure that we provide the council some basic information tonight with an anticipation of a formal agreement coming to council on December 21. And second, in our discussion with American Cruise Line, we felt it was important to bring this informational piece to council tonight to show our commitment to getting an agreement in place. So with that, if you have any questions, comments, concerns, we we certainly would entertain them tonight. Or as we work toward December 21st, you know, council can always contact staff. But again, more of an informational piece tonight. And again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, Chad, I'm just wondering how how the stocking will impact access and use of Cal Fremling Road and if there'll be like a fire hose running across the road or if the road will be blocked off while these boats are docked.
Mayor and Council, we do anticipate some closures to Cal Fremling. I don't believe that the entire time that the boat is docked, that the row would need to be closed, but there certainly would be times for unloading and loading passengers. You know, again, moving passengers from Levy Park to other areas in Winona, there certainly will be times when Cal Fremling will be closed. We also do, through the agreement, need to provide utilities. And in some ways, that is the only way we can bring water to the to the ship or to the boat. And so there will be some infrastructure, like you mentioned, hose or whatever, that will be across Cal Fremling as another example of why we would need to limit use in that area while they're docked.
Mayor, I have a question also. This is Pam.
Go ahead.
Yes. So maybe that verges on what I'm going to ask. I'm interested in the term priority docking. What does that mean?
It primarily mean, or Mayor Council, it it primarily means that the American Cruise Lines from from their business operations wants some assurance that they can stop in Winona. And so when we say priority, I think it's important to mention that it's priority for the licensed premise, but it's not inclusivity, meaning that it doesn't mean that they're the only vessel that could dock there. So those are two terms that we want to make sure that we're really clear about in the agreement. We understand from American Cruise Line's standpoint that it is important to have a priority and to know a schedule so that their passengers know, you know, when they're stopping and that Winona can be a stop on their upper Mississippi stretch. But it does not mean exclusivity. It does mean that members of the public can still dock. It doesn't, this wouldn't have an adverse effect on Cal Fremling or the tour boat, or as I mentioned, other boats that may dock, you know, the American Queen or even just obviously members that are using the Mississippi River.
Councilman Thurly with a couple of questions. Thank you. Is this a day visit only or would passengers or potential customers for the cruise line be boarding or, you know, disembarking in Winona?
Mayor, I I missed at part of Al's question. It cut out.
I did, too. You want to ask the question again, Al?
Sure, sure. With these visits, would it be for disembarking or beginning a cruise or ending a cruise in Winona?
Mayor and Council, we are one of the stops on the upper Mississippi stretch. It would it would not be the beginning or end of a tour. The tours primarily start while they start in different locations, but primarily end in St. Paul or begin in St. Paul and go down river.
And as a follow-up, do you have any idea what people would be doing? Would they be doing guided tours or would it be just simply a release into the downtown area or hasn't then that been worked out yet?
That hasn't been fully worked out yet, but they will they will do similar to what the other big boats have done in Winona with hop-on, hop-off tours. They're very open to lots of ideas for their time in Winona. And that that's if the approval is given, then that'll be the next thing.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to the next item.
Item 3.5 is the license agreement for the Winona tour boat.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to authorize the mayor and state clerk to sign the license agreement.
I'm Pam. Iden seconds.
All right, we have a motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
I have a correction, Mayor.
Go ahead, Al.
To the license agreement that's in our packet, it talks about the date of 2018. I'm sure that would be corrected to 2020 when it's signed and put forward for approval.
Good catch, Al. So noted. Any other questions? If not, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurly.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Idan.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3.6 is a report on the Emerald Ash Boar for right-of-way and park property ash trees. It's informational packet.
Who wants to address this? Well, Your Honor, the staff was asked to address this issue by council. We prepared a response and Chris Kramer's online as well from the three departments. If there's any technical questions, maybe turn it over to Brian.
Yeah, like Steve said, last council meeting, we were asked to make a report on this. And the hash in your packet is that report. Little history on this. This began in 2012, 2013. Little history on this, this began in 2012, 2013, as the ash bore was coming into town. The purpose when it first came about was to not overwhelm our canopy by having a, you know, a large amount of these ash trees die at once and not overwhelm our tree crew with an abundance of trees to take down all at once. We're at a point now where we've achieved a lot of that, and we're down to 12% of our canopy in the boulevards/parks are ash trees. We're at the number 23% when we started. We've replaced a lot of the trees that were taken down, and we've got about 860 that are boulevards/parks still that are alive. I'll kind of turn it over to Chris or council to ask technical questions, because Chris is definitely an expert on that.
Questions of staff?
Yes, Mayor, this is Pam. I did have a question.
Pam, go ahead.
Yes, a couple of things. I would hope that the trees that are planted to replace the ash trees would be would be trees that are both native and also have a somewhat more extended range than some of the trees have. Given the global climate change situation and the kind of the shifting of growing zones, I would hope that we would be planting trees that do well in warmer or wetter conditions. This is just a comment. I'm not sure if the city's ready to take that on, but I'd be interested to hear.
Mayor and the council, this is Chris Kramer, Tree Department. We actually are kind of adjusting for that. We're picking a few trees that are a little bit more native southern than us and seeing if they're working. And for the most part, we've been doing pretty good.
What trees would those be? Like sycamore?
Yep, London Plains. We've been picking up on them. They had a hard winter last year, but they've been doing okay. You know, red buds sometimes have a tough time around here, and they've been doing great. Chestnuts.
Great, thank you.
That's all carries.
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
So I can see, I mean, I see a lot of trees and in private yards too, and clearly they're dying and understand the need to remove them because they can be hazards. I get in the parks quite a bit, and now that I'm living in the proper main part of town here, I get into Sinclair Park almost daily, and quite a lot of the trees there are ash. I'm wondering if we could continue for some of these smaller parks? Because if we just let them go right now, and they seem to all kind of die, you know, at the same time. Although Chris is going to have an answer to that. Could we maybe continue this program just for a couple of these smaller parks where a high percentage of the trees are ash? And so that canopy isn't just wiped out all in one full swoop? And we can kind of take them out, you know, a couple at a time, rather than just denuding the parks?
Yeah, absolutely. That's an option. I would warn that the more, the smaller this contract gets, the less we're going to get really good deals on it. The previous contract went for around $5 an inch injection. With smaller contracts, we're not going to invite that company out of the cities or pull that company out of the cities. We're going to be looking at closer to $10 an inch.
So it was just an idea to see if we can kind of spread the damage, if we want to call it that, for these treasured little in-town parks over a longer period of time. And that way, the canopy isn't just completely wiped off and started fresh. It kind of is, you know, piece by piece. Just an idea.
Mark, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So thank you, Brian and Chris, for putting this report together. So I had received some calls from property owners that were concerned about the loss of trees on the boulevards because the majority of their trees along the boulevard are ash trees. So I understand why we're doing this, and I knew it was always the long-term plan was to not continue treatment. It was to get us through the hump and slowly, you know, take down trees and replace with a larger variety of trees so that if and when the next big, you know, bug-infested tree thing, like the Dutch elm comes through, we don't lose entire swaths of trees along our boulevards. Is it possible that owners could decide to take on treatment of the trees? Or is that something we wouldn't want to tackle in case they choose not to do it? I mean, I have a few people that I think have indicated they don't want to lose the trees in their boulevard. What are our options?
Yeah, if a homeowner wants to treat on their own, we're certainly open to that. We'd appreciate a phone call so that we can have a heads up on it. But, you know, if a tree stays healthy, we're not going to cut down a healthy tree. We're going to be so busy with the dead ones that it'll be irrelevant to us.
Right, so I think what I indicated to them that is you're not going to just go around and just start cutting trees down. You're looking for trees throughout the community that need to be trimmed or treated or cut. And that as trees die, you're going to address that issue at that time. So I think what you're saying is what I had explained to them is that as long as the trees in front of their properties are healthy, you're not going to come by and cut them down.
And with very rare exception, we let homeowners know before we do any work at all. And, you know, we want to work closely with them as well, so we don't want anyone coming home to us now.
Right, without them knowing. And is this the same in our park system? So you're not just going to go into like Wyndham or Sinclair or any park and just cut the trees down? You're going to wait till they need to be removed? Is that correct? And then potentially replace or look at what potentially could go back into those parks? Is that accurate?
Yes, to a point. Some people's opinion of when a tree needs to go is going to be different than ours. Trees can really become a hazard even before they're completely dead. So again, you know, we're so busy with trees that really need to go. It's unlikely that we're going to take down a tree that doesn't.
Right, well, I trust your team implicitly in determining when a tree needs to be cut. I just want to assure the public that we're not just coming through, or I should be more specific, you aren't just coming through and hacking down trees throughout the community. You're tackling the ones that need to be addressed in the immediacy, and then each year you'll address trees as you always have that need to go, you will take.
Correct.
Thank you.
Pam, go ahead.
Oh, excuse me, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, okay, fine. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on.
I have one, your honor.
Okay, go ahead, Steve.
Because the money was removed from the preliminary budget, there is no money for the treatment. However, as we explained earlier in the pre-council, we had preliminary budgeted $225,000 for the police social work project. And we've got, we're going to have a $40,000 cut to that if council continues. So there is some money if their council would like to consider during budget, final budget time at the next meeting to restore some of that funding so that some of the trees could be treated still.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, George here.
Yes, George.
I know on my property, I had about 12 Emerald Ash Bore trees, and four of them got the disease. And I just had them clean all of them off my property. So eventually, I think they're all going to get it, and these neighboring, so I just said, take them all and done with it, so.
Okay, next item.
We will move on to the unfinished business. Item 4.1 is to award the contract for the Crooked Slough Levy Drainage Improvements to S.J. Lewis Trenchless LLC. I would now to type on the agenda, Lewis is L-O-U-I-S. And we are recommending a contract to them with a bid of $267,857.
I'm Alexander. Make up motion to approve the attached resolution awarded to S.J. Lewis Trenchless.
For a second?
I'll second that.
All right, a motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
Councilman Thurling with a question.
Okay, Al.
During the process of building this or taking care of it, would Riverview Drive be impacted as far as traffic is concerned?
Al, this is Brian. Not at all. This is totally just lining the culverts underneath there, and they're accessible either from the riverside or from the land side or as in the Olmstead Pump Station through the pump station.
Okay, and that's what I suspected, but when would this project get underway and when would it be done?
They indicated that being, obviously, as we know, the rivers are as low as during the winter, that this is great winter work, and they can complete this even in January, dead of winter. So I'm assuming it'll be a January project.
Good, great, thank you.
Okay. We need to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the 2021 Minnesota City Participation Program.
I am Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to have the mayor and city clerk execute the attached program application and accept the two attachments, the resolution and the program application commitment agreement.
Eileen seconds.
All right, a motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Do we know what the interest rates are going to be?
Mayor, council, this is Nick with Community Development. The interest rates, they're going to, exactly where they're at right now, they're not a set rate, but they just go with the market above prime. So they're competitive rates, and they are off, the loans are based off taxes at bonds.
I bought my house almost 38 years ago. I participated in a program just like this, and they were 13%. And that was a, that was a deal.
I believe right now at a 30-year, it's right at 3% interest rate.
Yeah. Not a bad deal. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, George here.
George?
I believe this is an excellent program, and I believe it's well-used.
It is. All right, I think we're ready to vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.2 is the Cedar Brook Subdivision Preliminary Plaid.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the plaid as recommended by the planning commission.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.3 is the final plat for the Lake Park Second Subdivision.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution and accept the two attachments.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion?
Mayor, George here.
Go ahead, George.
Can anybody touch on any or say anything of any developments that may be going on in that particular parcel? I know there was some talk about the restaurant.
I think first things first here.
Mayor and council, I can speak to that if you're comfortable with that, Mayor.
Go ahead, Luke.
The applicant cave enterprises is still intending to build a Burger King franchise at that location. This is just a budding, the end of their 180 days to have the plat recorded, and they are requesting, or they have a name change request from Tari Corporation. So the plan is still to do that in 2021.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.4 is an agreement with Borzakowski Towing for the Inspections Department.
Oh, I'll second George's.
Agreement.
Okay, George makes the motion and Michelle seconds. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, George, as I say every year, this is Borzakowski, not Borzakowski.
All right, make that clear.
Councilman Thurling with a question. I'd like to know how many, on an average, year are vehicles towed by request of the inspections Department? Any idea?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this is Lucy McMartin. We don't have too many that get to the point where they have to be towed, but I would say we average eight or maybe 10 a year.
So this cleans up vehicles that are kind of abandoned or in people's yards? And that particular program that started many years ago, I think, with Councilman Craig? So, thank you.
All right, any other questions? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.5 is the agreement with Borzakowski Towing for the Police Department.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, Michelle Alexander.
George will second that.
Goodbye, Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Carries.
Item 5.6 is to approve the license agreement for the transit bus advertising services with Help Transit Advertising.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve that request.
George will second it.
Yeah, Michelle makes the motion, George seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Iden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Scholmeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5.7 is a resolution to certify polling places for the 2021 elections. I would note there are none scheduled for 2021, but by state law, we are required to certify the list.
I'm Michelle Alexander. I'll second you, George. I'll second George, Michelle Alexander.
Who made the motion?
George. March.
Oh, okay. George made the motion and Michelle seconded. Any discussion?
Councilmember Scholmeyer.
Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I do want to, I did get calls, and I have heard from people over there in the second ward by St. Anne's. Is that the one that we moved, I think? In particular, from some Winona State students who were felt that they really had to travel further than necessary to vote downtown. I understand, will we be able to change this back by 2022?
Yes, Mayor and Council, because there are no elections scheduled for '21, I felt it best to leave the list as is. If you were going to change any polling sites, the city would be required to pay for postcards to notify all the residents. And then we would likely move it again for the 2022 elections. And did not feel that was a good move right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Aye.
Councilman Thurling. Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.8 is a, an ordinance to dissolve the Recreational Waterways Commission.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve that.
Eileen. I, Ayden, seconds.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to, uh, make a comment here. This is Pam. I, I was assigned to this, uh, recreational waterways commission eight years ago when I first joined council. And, uh, I know it has not been busy because I've never been to one meeting. Uh, but I would like to know, uh, who does this work? It seems like it's, um, very important work to, to, uh, study the recreational boating needs and to hear suggestions and complaints. Who is doing this now if not the recreational waterways commission?
So mayor and council, so some of the duties are assigned to the public works department. Others would be assigned by the city manager as needed. So pub, uh, public works is looking at, or they do the reports on fuel, uh, usage, I think, is it monthly during the season? Um, any complaints would be brought to staff to deal with and would be brought directly to council if staff is unable to, uh, resolve those.
Okay. Thank you. That's very interesting. That's all.
Mayor George.
Questions, George, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I served on this committee as well too, when I was first on council, then I was replaced by the, the late Deb Salliards. And I think if any decision really is to be made, you know, this committee can make it, but I believe it would have to come to the council then to authorize, uh, that change or amendment or ordinance, whatever it may be. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.9 is an amendment to the massage therapy license ordinance. I would note the council adopted this ordinance in August. And I just sent out the license application prior to, uh, Thanksgiving. We did receive some calls about the two-year license. So we are, uh, suggesting that for the first year, the license fee would just be for one year, and that would be $100 instead of the $200, just for the first year.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Pam, I, the second.
Yeah, motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Eileen, go ahead.
Yeah, I, um, I'm sure other folks received emails about the license fee, um, as well as the requirements for liability insurance that, um, massage therapists are now required to carry and that the folks who contacted me felt that the liability insurance was, um, almost prohibitive to them doing their practice. So I'm just wondering if we can, if that's something we can revisit. I know with a lot of our small businesses that the required, um, insurance is often, uh, an impediment to them being able to conduct business.
You're suggesting that they not have liability insurance?
No, that they still have it, but that, that, uh, for some million dollar policy is, is really expensive.
May I make a comment here as a, as a yoga teacher?
Go ahead.
A million dollars of insurance for, for this kind of thing. I don't know about it specifically for massage therapy, but it's not, that is not necessarily expensive. It sounds like a big number, but I think my, my insurance was all of $50 or $75. So I'm not sure. I, it's not necessarily outrageous.
Think I'm, uh, this is something I don't, uh, obviously have the expertise in, but it's something that, um, some of our massage therapists had, uh, emailed me about. So I just wanted to ask the question.
And mayor and council, I would note the million dollars was in, included in the original ordinance. And it was recommended by both the city attorney and the two, uh, women who were assisting the staff in drafting the ordinance.
I certainly support giving them a break here this year. And I think this seems like a reasonable compromise. Any other comments? That will vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.10 is the 2020 Sidewalk Replacement Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
George seconded it.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.11 is the Recreational Alliance of Winona Service Agreement for the Sugarloaf Climbing Area.
I, Michelle Alexander, make a motion to direct the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 5.12 is the employee vacation accrual schedule.
Sorry, I, Michelle Alexander, would make a motion to approve the change to the schedule.
George will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor George here. Uh, does this vacation accrual schedule, uh, pertain to the city council too? I heard the manager laugh.
Well, to discuss your, uh, your towing rates.
No other questions?
Mayor and council, I, I think the, um, the request speaks for itself, but what we're finding is that, uh, younger employees, newer employees were expecting to accrue at a different rate than what we were offering. And, um, we went through, Deb went through many, many different ways of trying to figure this out. And, um, it looks much more complicated than it probably should be, but, um, it allows for accrual, we think, at a pace that, uh, that is more competitive than what we're at right now. I think overall, the, the vacation hours we're offering, uh, is, is certainly within market. Uh, it's just the early recrual and usage capability for new employees was not there. And, uh, we found ourselves making lots of exceptions to policies for folks that we, that we would recently hire. Um, so this corrects that situation and we think, uh, addresses those concerns.
All right. If there's anything else, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with the first word. Al.
Well, thank you, mayor. Um, but the only thing I have is just to wish, uh, those folks who are celebrating, uh, as we are in the month of December, coming up from December 10th through the 18th is, uh, Hanukkah. So happy Hanukkah or Haag Shema'ak. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Second word, Eileen.
I just wanted to, um, congratulate Kisha on her award that you gave her, uh, at the beginning of our meeting, mayor. She does really phenomenal work and, um, is a really valuable citizen. And we are very fortunate to have her in our community. Um, I also have a question, um, completely unrelated from a community member. Um, is there, uh, a, a staff member may know the answer. If not, I can take my answer off the air, but, um, someone asked about, um, any ordinance for leaving, uh, trash bins out on the curb all the time, um, because they are concerned about the, um, beauty of their neighborhood, but also concerned about what will happen when, um, the plows start coming through that, um, I'm guessing many of the properties are rentals and perhaps, um, the property owners are not keeping an eye on their tenants bringing the bins in. But, um, just curious about that.
I think they can just call the inspections department.
That's kind of what I thought. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, next third word, Pam.
Really nothing for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Fourth word, George.
Yes. Everything is good and well. I don't know. I just want to congratulate the two city employees on their retirements from the wastewater treatment plant. We're retiring two very, very good, uh, members of that workforce. They're all good members and these guys were good members and wish them very well. And also this evening, I am just wearing my Sloppy Joe's Polo shirt this evening in honor of the passing of owner Chuck Luszczyk. And that bar has been into business for over 100 years. And as, uh, some people have told me, if everyone would run their establishment like that one is run, there would be no bar problems. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Michelle?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Paul?
Yeah, well, I have a list. Let's start out with Hamilton Railroad tracks. I saw them doing work and, uh, unfortunately they made it worse. And so, uh, that, that hopefully will keep coming up until we get some kind of, uh, smoothening over at Hamilton. Um, I was just wondering, uh, who did the concrete work at Second and Washington Street on the corner there? Um, it, it just looked like, I mean, I could have done really a better job. I'm just wondering who did it or if they did it, uh, you know, in, in too cold a weather or what happened there? Um, looks pretty sloppy. And then finally, uh, St. Charles Street Boat Landing. Um, the, right at the landing where the, the gravel pad is, where you, you pull your boat out and turn around there, it looks like some ATVs have been tearing up the gravel down there and it's, it's quite rutted. And maybe we, uh, need to police that landing a little bit more, um, because, uh, the, those ruts are, are getting pretty, uh, pretty deep. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
And under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from November 16th, and the final adoption of an ordinance to prohibit trucks from using the alley between Third and Fourth and Main and Center.
Al Thurlie, I approve, uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Eileen will second.
Okay. I thought we were not going to give a second there for a second. Uh, okay. Motion by Alan, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Council, or, uh, Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander. Alexander.
I think she needs to abstain.
Okay. Uh, Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Wait a minute. What? Are you adjourning?
Yes, we are adjourning.
Okay. We'll be adjourning and then going into the closed session for the city manager's review.
I second that motion.
All right. We have a motion, uh, by George and seconded by Pam. Uh, assuming there's no discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Councilman Thurlie.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
There she is. Ayden.
Hi.
Borzakowski.
Hi.
Scholmeyer.
Hi.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.